Welcome, Jim Reiser to the council.
Thank you.
The board of the town. And your protector on the mic.
I'm looking forward to three years and I appreciate the folks who voted for me. Try not to let people down with whether you voted for me or not. It's your responsibility, so, you know, you know how to go with me. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Um, second thing is I'd like to add an agenda item to Old Business, um, to discuss the town subsidies. I'd like to, uh, item added as title number one and move to executive session. Okay. All calls, all councillors are here. And now open up any public comments and discussions. All right.
I'll be having a say. I already have a say, but let me go.
Any other public comments, we will move on to the agenda items, approve, review, approve and sign minutes from the March eleventh, uh, regular meeting.
I make a motion that we approve minutes from the March eleventh for the other meeting.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? All abstained. Basic item review, approve, assignments from the March eighteenth organizational meeting.
I make a motion that we approve minutes from March eighteenth of organizational meeting.
I'll second that. Any discussion on this? All in favor? Okay, second item number three, review, approve and sign the twenty twenty five treasure warrants ten V through thirteen P.
I make a motion that we approve the twenty, the treasure warrants ten V to thirteen P.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, first item, item under New Business, uh, we approve the Rooster Reserve Fishing Game application for special amusement permits and gates for the entertainment.
I make a motion that we approve the Rooster Reserve Fishing Gate application for special amusement permit for the entertainment.
Any discussion?
Is this a normal event? I just didn't see what event it is, or is it just a wonder, is it for them?
Is it one specific event, or is it two?
I think it's for their year.
Oh, okay.
In general.
That makes more sense, because I'm like, okay, what's going on?
They're both annual and all.
Okay. So if anybody else wants to go there, then they're covered, or?
Yes, it's so they can hold them up there.
Makes sense.
More session? All in favor? Yeah, number two, review and approve River Fishing Game, uh, water plug registration application.
I make a motion that we approve the Rooster River Fishing Game so far as registration application.
This one, they only need signatures for three, I suppose, for three spots, I'm sure you guys have some, I don't know.
I'll, I'll second that.
Second that, any discussion on?
I just did a couple of comments at the management for check on the application. The first question is, is applicant corporation in Mark yes, but they didn't fill out the corporation information. And then number three was regular days and hours, and there's nothing filled in, and I just don't want this to get sent back by the state because something wasn't.
I believe the reason that they left that one blank is because they don't have set days and hours?
Yeah, it's. It's not a problem, I just verify that they don't need that, so the state doesn't kick it back.
More session? All in favor? Okay, item number three, review and approve reallocation of remaining twenty twenty one, uh, NEU ARPA funds.
So we received a phone call saying that we're out of clients for the twenty twenty three ARPA, which on your book would show as the twenty twenty one NEU ARPA reporting. I think when you guys collectively speak, you should refer to that as COVID money, and that was part of that grant. Um, we worked with the state program coordinator to do all the reporting. All the funds would have had to have been sent prior to twelve thirty one, but there was still our remaining balance of five thousand nine hundred thirty dollars and sixty nine cents, uh, which would have had to have been paid back. Working with that state coordinator, we were able to find that we could use salt purchased in twenty twenty three in our case of the fund. Uh, since we had an amount more than that utilized, we can maybe could use this to write it off as part of that grant. So basically, the recommendation would be of looking to reallocate the five thousand nine thirty sixty nine twenty twenty one NEU ARPA funds to the highway department.
Move these, may I ask your clarification?
Second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you for.
With, um, we'll say creative questioning when you're on the call.
Okay, items number four and five, um, just to discuss about candidates, start filling the vacant boards that, uh, Mr. Reiser was on. If we're going to discuss the candidates, we should probably be in executive session. I don't know how you guys feel about that, but.
Yeah, if there's more than one candidate per position, we should leave it in the exception. If there's no candidates, because we're going to talk about, if that'll be the word out, is there any suggestions on that?
Is anybody, is it, is it, is it a town?
Somebody formally applied, um, one person expressed an interest, but as far as formally applying, it was reached out.
I don't remember how we got people on those threes before.
So, so the previous manager asked me, there's a vacancy, that was how they used to, uh, I've been on councils and towns where there's a, like a one-page form, very generic, just to say if you're interested, just to get people. But they have something on papers, the council can look at those, it's not, I, Fort Perryville had one, if we wanted to do that. But then you get the word out on the town website, um, word of mouth is always good, if, you know, someone might be interested. And then what we have, the application, even if the manager can look and see what other means counties might use, and then hopefully by next month we'll have some, the people that are interested.
So do we need a motion that, we can just let the town manager go?
Do you guys want to put out an application, advertise those positions potentially?
I think, yeah, I think we'll advertise that those positions are vacant, and then we can, um, there's any interest, we can review it.
And it's more, it's more than two, right?
Just two, it's, you have money more than, probably because of.
And as far as advertising, I don't see a need to create an extra expense of doing it in the newspaper, or you just go with it going on the website?
Yeah, that and the, um, maybe the.
The board, yeah.
Okay, well, now cover items four and five, so we'll leave item number six, uh, review and discuss citizen requests for drafting a local food sovereignty ordinance.
So we had a citizen come in and drop off a request, and included everything that was dropped off in your packet. Just looking for the town to begin drafting a local food sovereignty ordinance. On here, basically looking to see if you guys, your thoughts on it, and if you want to send it to planning board to have them draft an ordinance.
That's where it should go, isn't it?
You've got a good draft right here.
Yeah, so she doesn't provide, she provided this as well.
We've, uh, entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we send the local food sovereignty ordinance to the planning board for drafting and revision.
Accepting that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, New Business, we will, uh, we will move to executive session, considering the news and, um, not if you want to stand a call. So we'll go to the discussion of, uh, town subsidies.
So on Friday, we received a letter from the town of Portage. On Monday, we got copies in the mail, we have to be fair. They have agreed to pass the ambulance, um, as proposed, so they got their signed contract back on that. As far as the rec center and the library, they have agreed to pay for this year, they're saying that they will pay, um, for the rec center, uh, Pixie six hundred, and they use the formula to do it based off a per usage fee. Uh, and the library forty four hundred, but moving forward, they're proposing that we charge a fee to their residents. We collect their residents' money, we provide the resident with a receipt, the resident takes the receipt back to the Portage Town Office, and the Portage will reimburse their citizens for the fees that we charged them, and that was, that's all they would be paying towards the library and rec.
So actually, twenty six, the town of Portage Lake is paying nothing.
Correct, just reimbursing.
Well, but they're paying the town nothing.
They would be paying the town nothing at all. It would only be based off what?
But they, the point is, I'm trying to make is, even though they reimbursed their citizens, they're paying the town of Ashland. The town of Portage Lake is paying the town of Ashland nothing in twenty twenty six according to this proposal.
Correct, for the library and the rec center.
Okay, thanks.
Um, so obviously, last year we had a lot of discussions, um, with subsidies, and we thought we came up with a fair formula and transparency to, so they can justify to their townspeople, you know, the pricing of it, but apparently that has changed. My, uh, feeling on this is when we came up with subsidy prices, that's what it was, it was more of a distance of price, or there's nothing at all, it was like a, you know, negotiable price. I know, uh, Staris has signed up to the library, and we, you know, that, what they always still consider as due. So I guess we need to come up with a plan, or where to look from here. Any suggestions?
There is no good solution.
Now, as our population dwindles, we have some serious things that we have to consider, just on an economic standpoint. We don't, we don't, we don't have the population to support it. And if the surrounding towns are refusing to, then we have tough decisions to make, either put the burden on our taxpayers to keep it, or make cuts. I mean, it's basically having two things. Well, big sales, I mean, I don't know, or any other way to raise money.
Well, the, the sad, one of the saddest parts about it is, we have programs that are growing, you know, I mean, our library program is a growing program. And with the library growing, I'm watching, the rec program is offering in things in conjunction with the library, so both of those programs are growing. And to assume that the rec department only works with children, or that the library only works with adults, is, is a misrepresentation of those services. I know that Lendo took, um, they were supposed to go to Jade, but I think they ended up at Teresa's, he takes the adult places. I know that we have children at the library doing reading programs, they're advertising themselves exceptionally well on Facebook, lots of good press on what is going on in our library for individuals of all ages from all of our communities.
Just to clarify, in the letter that I had shared with you guys, they didn't, they're, they're not looking at it as just the children, and when they came to their figures, they used X number of adults and X number of children as well, so they're, they're factoring in adult people. Yep, this is our kind of library.
And the letter also says, when, when we sell the buildings, I had not heard any talk about us, until what you just said. I, I didn't, I didn't think we'd had any conversations about shutting down the library, or any conversations about shutting down the rec department. To me, those are two programs that we are committed to as a community for, well, even like the book club I went to last week at the library, you know what I mean? That was, um, is part of what brings culture to our community, which people may not think is important, but it is. Those stimulating conversations with other people are, are important, so it's, they're important programs, and I agree that we, we need help. We're not Prescott Hills, we don't have lots and lots of people to pay for it, so we need help from other people who are using the services. I don't see what we sent them though as negotiable. What we're charging is a fair price for what they're getting.
Right, and most towns are a part of this community, I mean, all their kids, you know, go to the school, they're all together, it's, uh, I think it's, you know, wouldn't be right for, I, I don't think it's quite what they're doing, in every way, just we're one big community, you know?
And I don't want, oh, shut up.
No, go ahead.
I don't want Lendo or Hillary to ever have to turn somebody away because they don't live in Ashland. I, I, I know we say, it's like, well, they should pay, but I just, I don't think that's fair to them.
But, I mean, it's a, it is a tough subject, because we are a small community. And, you know, over the years, in the Castle of Chapman, we're able to work something out, uh, which I'd still like to see, even if it's just for the library and rec center, to work something out with surrounding communities. So they've got part ownership of buildings, so they're, they're really bought into those aspects. Uh, but that would take some discussion, and I think if you're preparing the discussion, you have a, the, the manager and a small number of elected officials, small enough, so you don't like that forum. So you can do it like a committee to look at what are ways we can do that, but in the meantime, you know, can't pick, have our time shutting Portage Lake, the residents out because of what the town has done. Uh, we could, using Portage Lake's funding scheme, of what we should charge their citizens, and I hate to do this to the library and the rec center, because it's a burden, an administrative burden, if nothing else. But we could have, we need a library card, and if you're from Portage Lake, there's an annual fee, whatever the council decides that is, and the same with the rec center. I mean, otherwise, our request for subsidy means nothing. So, I mean, I hate to, I don't like to play hardball with people's lives for the library and rec center, but the ball's in our court now. So that'd be my, my two recommendations near term. Start instituting, if you're from Portage Lake, you have to pay to use the library and rec center. Uh, figure out what that is and how it's going to work in the short term. See if, uh, the manager can talk to the manager of Portage Lake, and see if we can get the, the chairs and the select board and the council to pick one or two people to be on a committee that you can meet without, again, a quorum, see if we can fill in some alternatives. Again, they take, it'll take a while, but at least when you start talking, that'd be, uh, suggestions.
I did speak with their chair briefly today, and she had run with, however you guys decide, whoever, myself and two members, however you guys want to decide to do that, we can discuss with somebody.
Um, so I, I know, I've heard a lot, like, I heard last year where they feel they're paying us and they don't have any say. Would any, would you guys entertain if maybe we had this up to me, so they could have some input on things, or if that gets them to, you know, invest in?
Yeah, make them, if we need a motion, soft right to town manager to, uh, tell the Portage Lake manager that we're, you're willing to, and have sugar, uh, was to be shown, point, pass forward, point to council members to work with the town manager in Portage Lake.
Second that.
Um, so I, it, so I do have some, like, a part of that with what they were looking for, um, because we, I mean, we went through this last year as well. But part of what they were looking for, I think, is they want to have input on, you know, budgetary numbers with how we spend it, spend our money. So, I mean, I guess we need to open the door for the conversation, and kind of go from there, but.
Right, I agree with you, those kind of conversations, I recommend being done at this committee, you know, and that, that committee and manager can bring back what the deliberations are, so we're, you know, making the sausage a smaller, you know, it's a, I, I agree with you.
Can I say something to start my third?
I don't have a problem, I have to do that. We should vote, we should vote whether you can say something or not.
But I don't think either votes, uh, it's kind of, I think the chair always says the, the ability to recognize is one of the majority councilor, you, you don't have to vote.
I agree, I would allow you to speak.
I just, I can't, I don't, I don't really see how this can help us any. Last year, we did the same thing, we threw it, we, we met with them, and they said all they ordered was transparency. We gave them transparency, this year they're asking for something else. I just don't, I think it's, they're going to add that, not very much, because if, like, if they just charge kids this year, that's going to be a small number, but they, uh, they're, um, safe for this, we're not going to get much out of that. Because I'll be honest, there's less kids, yes, that use rec, used to, there's less kids, but, there's less kids go to school now, we still have to pay school, you know, it's the same thing to me, so. I just don't see where else it's going to help out, I think this is just going to be some help next year. Because we gave them, like, one last year, we gave them, so we had, so it's all or none, we give to them so they can, they can choose. I mean, what's more going to give them, I just don't know. And I don't want to turn it any way, you know, I've got a lot of kids out there, but that's just my feeling. I feel bad, but I'm only here to, I'll be honest anyways, but I feel bad for rec directors going to collect money and all that stuff, it's just, that's what they've always said all the way through, if they're, they're going to charge them anyway, but it was always nice, they didn't have to bear it.
And those are the kind of discussions that this committee would have, to take, hopefully, at that level, you take some of the emotionality out, and, uh, you may not be reaching a conclusion, but at least, you're on kind of neutral ground, ignore those emotions and figure out that then.
Yeah, I deserve what my emotions are now. So, uh, sorry, so, yeah, we had a discussion, you seconded the motion to.
I seconded it, I think you made it.
All right, is there any more discussion on?
I think it would be really helpful if you moved on to committee, simply because you know the structure of the, of the Mapleton Castle of Chapman thing.
A little bit, and then the managers are talking with the manager, and the Castle of Chapman, and that, that'll help out for, you know, everyone else. But, you know, I bet you it'll serve. Does anybody else?
I'd consider myself a short timer, and it wouldn't be fair, because it's going to take effect unless I have fallen at my head again.
I can push you.
No, you need to, I just don't think it'd be fair, I.
Unless there's any more discussion, do you have anything to say on that? All right, all in favor? Okay, so we will move on to the management report.
Um, just a couple of things. First up, I came across an email, and I had a brief discussion with Jim. Um, planning board was supposed to start meeting about a wind, a wind energy moratorium. I don't see that that happened, I don't have any correspondence in the email or anything about that, so is that something you guys, we can reach out to the chair and say?
So the council's just tasked the planning board on the food solid, tree solid, and the, and the council can task the planning board to start meeting on the wind energy? I think part of the problem might have been there's no, there's no color enforcement officer, and the color enforcement officer is normally the, the staff liaison, and also the secretary, so to speak. So if there's no from staff prompting that, I think that's why there was no activity on the planning board. But I think the planning board can afford on these two, because they're good draft ordinances already, so it's not going to take a lot of heavy lifting, and they're part of it.
Do you know if they already have a draft of the winds?
According to the previous, the head of town manager, they do. And, uh, they got from NBC, at least the color enforcement officer, I also know Fort Perryville developed one several years ago, so there's drafts out in the county that they could use.
Um, Ashland A T V Club reached out, they're looking for town property, if there's any available, they mentioned the Southern House, because at some point they were told that that might become town property, that's not town property. Um, but they're looking for a place to potentially build like a clubhouse, could I just bring it to you guys and see, does anybody have any suggestions or any thoughts, or something we can kind of keep in the back room on if anything comes up? Um, they did mention property down by the fishing game club. I haven't gotten to dig into the map to look at it, see if we actually own anything down there. How do we know? And then I have the highway department, um, how their department needs to replace their trucks, they're looking at potentially, the want is a one-ton truck with a sander and a plow. The thought process behind that is then they can use that as a backup if they need to on small streets, and they can use it in like the rec center parking lot, the library parking lot, the town office parking lot. Um, their truck has over two hundred thousand miles on it, and they're saying it's not going to take a sticker this year. Additionally, they're looking at replacing that trackless machine that was sold with a tractor, um, snow blower, pickleball roller, sweeper, to take care of the sidewalk beside the road. Just kind of looking to open discussions, see what your guys' thoughts are, and how you want to direct that. and how you want to direct that.
I'm not a big part of the tractor.
It's kind of like a radio alarm, so it can do all the jobs, it doesn't do any of them well.
Correct.
And it, you know, it's not sleeping.
Um, I would like to see, maybe we could look out to see if there's any used trackless machines that would suit our current needs if we are, and if it happens to the sidewalks. I looked, you know, quickly online, um, and there's actually some decent ones for Rock Westlake. Look, this is for something new. So I hope that's, maybe that anybody would be looking to, but. There's nothing we have to make a decision on in town, obviously, but...
Thought they told us we didn't need any of this equipment. And so I'm having a really hard time to purchase something right now. What I would like to see, though, is a long-term plan on what they have for equipment, what they need for equipment, and prioritize it and get it into next year's budget. I think that would be, because everything that we got rid of, we're like, we sat here two months in a row and said, are you sure you want to get rid of that? And they said, yes, we do.
I, I had a conversation with the foreman, because he was bouncing ideas off of me, and I didn't lean one way or the other, but I said, there's a long, short-term wants and needs right now. I said, but not knowing what's coming up next month or the month after, the month after, it's very easy to say yes now and then regret that in two months. And I said the same thing, I said, we need to know.
Long-term.
We've got to make this budget last for 12 months. We can't spend it all right now. And I said, oh, crap, I wish we had some money to do this project. I said, we need a plan.
Well, but they, they need to start a, do a five-year capital improvement plan. You know, that's just, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I found coming into this, I know historically that has not been done, a draft of board in any department, so. Definitely starting from scratch to move in that direction. So these are just like the wants and needs that I'm getting hit with day in and day out. And the, the question being, what are we going to, what are we going to turn the side of the road? What are we going to cut the grass on the side of the road with?
We have something.
Well, I did, but I'm a public now, I'm going to look forward.
But I, I think Mr. Vessi's thought of, look to the long term. Instead of, oh, I need this now, wait a minute, six months, I need this. We can't really make good decisions if we don't look at the long term. What do you have? What's got to be replaced, and what do you need to do to your ground?
Right now, we're reacting to a lot of snap decisions that are costing us money. We have to have, have some more thought and discussion before we jump into these things.
I don't want to put the burden on you, but I guess I would test the highway board into the plan.
Okay.
So, so, never mind.
No, no.
It's not your main at this time.
What's that?
It's not your main at this time.
Are there immediate needs that cannot be met with the equipment that we have that are safety issues for the town?
There's going to be street sweeping that needs to be done. Kevin did have a task set up to reach out to Landville Construction to, I guess the decision was, when budgeting was done, to sub that out for this year. I'm of the mind that if we're going to start subbing everything out, then why do we have a highway department? We're just going to keep subbing everything out, so. Other than that, I mean, so roads themselves are pretty rough.
All that we know, yes. It, it would be behoove us to look around and see what other entities in the town that might be related to us might have something that would sweep the sidewalks for one year and pay that entity to sweep our sidewalks. I know that we do some things, we, the town, do some things for an entity that's kind of associated with us for at cost, what it costs us to do them, like moving some big snow. And maybe for a year, it might behoove us to pay somebody what it costs them to use their equipment for one year to get us through.
Does that say that we also have another company come in and do a larger cleanup?
They, they do their own sweeping. They're all the first.
It's not, it's not a private company.
No, it's, it's, it's coming out of the same pot, school budget, town budget, it's the same pot. But I know who would be doing it.
I found out they do that. I saw them out there sweeping, and I immediately thought that because I was told that they come to town to do the school. So I brought that up, that I saw somebody at that entity sweeping the driveway the other day. So that's not in fact true. They are doing all of it, and nothing's doing sub-concise?
I don't know, but I know that my guy does a lot of it. But I also know they, I think they come to us for the loader to move the big snow.
And the sand, the sand is stolen, isn't it?
Okay, so that's, it's not unreasonable to ask if we could get by for, it's the same bucket. We're all, it's the same tax dollar, and so if we can help each other for a year even...
Yeah, I think it's good for the manager.
Don't put him on this and shoot me.
I think it would be good for the manager to super-tend the cost and see how we can help each other out. Yeah, that's good.
That is all I have.
Now I really can't go home, Joe.
Can I say something?
No.
Anna Cloydes, you have to listen. Yeah, we'll, we'll talk after you.
Okay.
Kelly, have a good one.
No, I'm good.
Chris?
I did, but I lost it. Don't.
I love this letter you put in our packet.
Thank you. I was talking as I was filling it, and I, does anybody have opposed to potentially going digital in this packet?
I'm all for it. I was on a council years ago, and we did everything. It had, uh, a product called Board Doc. Everything was digital. Of course, then they gave us iPads, so we brought an iPad to meetings. Yeah, that, it worked out pretty good.
And we got some spare top books?
I, yeah, that's, that's all.
Thank you.
Uh, I do not have anything either. All right, so we will move to the executive session.
I mean, I'm looking to move to the executive session. First, I'm going to turn these to the one of our, I think, four or five, I should say.
I got it, I'm saying, yeah. Yeah, because they're filling it up.
Sorry, what did you do? You get a bunch of trouble.
Well, we, I mean, I think it's a whole, a whole, like, yeah, right now we got 14 people in.